Call this meeting to order, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. All right, next on our agenda, can I get an approval of the minutes of the meeting held on August eighth, please?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes and we now move on to persons wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items. We have two speakers tonight. I'm going to read a brief statement here. Public participation at school board meetings. This portion of the agenda is available for individuals wishing to address the board about a district-related subject. An individual wishing to address the board on a district-related issue must sign up prior to the start of the meeting with the business manager or designee and give his name, her name, address, and topic about which the person wishes to speak. The speaker is limited to five minutes regardless of the number of subjects the person wishes to cover. If multiple individuals sign up to speak on the same topic, total testimony on the topic shall be limited to 15 minutes per side of the issue as determined by the president. General decorum. Anyone addressing the board must give his or her name and address. The speaker may not give oral complaints regarding district personnel or personnel actions. Complaints regarding district personnel are to be addressed to the superintendent in private or in writing to the superintendent and board members in accordance with policy KEB and its accompanying regulation. The speaker may not offer personal attacks against any individual. The speaker may not give oral complaints identifying individual students. Complaints regarding individual students are to be addressed to the superintendent in private or in writing to the superintendent and board members in accordance with policy KE. The board president, at her discretion, may request the administration or another board member to respond to a person addressing the board immediately following input or may direct the administration to respond in writing. If an individual does not follow the appropriate guidelines for speakers, he or she may be denied the privilege of speaking before the board. Upon the first violation of the guidelines by an individual, such person's privilege of speaking may be suspended for the remainder of the board meeting at which the violation occurs. If an individual violates the guidelines a second time, the person's privilege of speaking before the board may be suspended for the remainder of that meeting and for the next board meeting. If an individual violates the guidelines a third time, the length of the suspension may be at the discretion of the president but may not exceed one year. All right, with that, we will start with Rick Alt. Rick Altard?
Altah.
Altah, sorry. Scratched out there. If you could give us your name again and your address, please?
Twenty-six hundred East thirty-third. So I'm a good resident of Sioux Falls and I'm here because two-thirds of our tax, real estate tax, goes through the school board system. And I'm a father of 10 living children and have had significant impact on educational experiences. And I find it very interesting as well to the board at this point that we give the pledge of allegiance here. Because I understand that's not acceptable in the school environment, in the classes and so on. Anyway, I may be right, may be wrong, okay, I may be wrong.
Every day. Yep.
But at the same time, do they pledge allegiance to the flag at the beginning of the school day?
Yes.
In each class?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that. There's a tremendous amount of value to be had from the standpoint of understanding what this educational mission is all about. And my questions largely come from the standpoint of this. What is the policy and what is happening with these overall arrangements in different school districts that have temporary files over here that are not parent-accessible? But what is parent-accessible is only what the district requires. This is not good. Because we live in a community, in a society that has to have a trusting relationship. And it's absolutely essential, the mission of education being that it is focused in on educating our children, our grandchildren, and all involved to the highest level possible to embrace them, to enhance them, to grow them. And this chaos that's happening in this culture, which partly is here as well, is very disturbing and it's unhealthy. And I find it to be very strongly that we've got to have a mission that's focused and that the community is behind it to be able to enhance and strengthen those basic educational missions. Now, I've got a science background and I certainly know the difference between a woman and a male. And I don't understand, I don't know where we're at with the LBG arrangements and so on. I certainly have been brought up in my lifetime, hate the sinner, hate the sin, but love the sinner. We have to have total respect for everybody. But to, in your, to something that's unnatural and unhealthy in many instances is not in the best interest of our community. I'm sorry, did somebody say something? All right. So that's what I am here to do, to stand strong, be bold, be courageous, and in a way to enhance that and bring these dollars together in such a very beneficial way to enhance it. It's not all about facilities. It's really about the spirit of raising these children, educating them with the basics of life and science and education to the basic issues of reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I strongly encourage you to consider that and bring that into policies. But I do appreciate recognizing what is happening in the administrative side of things. You're the school board, the administrative side of things, take a different route many times. This has been my experience over the many years. That I have been a parent of bringing all in a very significant way to the value that we hope for, that every citizen who is providing these two-thirds of the taxes that go to the school district, we expect the best from you and we hope for the best for you. And it's absolutely essential that we move forward in that direction with a common understanding that is important. Do you have any questions of myself? Thank you for your time. Appreciate that and your understanding as well.
Next up, we have Chad Bishop. Again, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Chad Bishop. I live at seven four zero five South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. First, let me begin by saying that my assumption is that all parents, teachers, administrators, and staff share my goodwill and best intentions for our children and our community. I invite you, again, to create a forum for discussion of sensitive topics like critical race theory, social-emotional learning, diversity, inclusion, and equity. Help the community understand what the Sioux Falls School District means when it uses these terms. Help diffuse the artificial tension that arises from your constituents assuming the worst when they see the results of policies incorporating these terms in other communities. Last October twenty-fifth, I addressed this body on the topic of diversity in hiring practices. At this time, quoting from a cheat sheet, I cited one understanding of the word diversity, and it might be understood to mean "an identity-based approach to society which includes only those who agree with social justice," which is a violation of individual identity and forced intellectual conformity, puts in place political quotas, and is an attack on merit in the form of soft bigotry. So this is a definition that many people you serve are starting to assume is meant when they hear this word used in the context of education or even employer hiring practices. So please explain to the families you serve what you mean when you say "we continue to value diversity." Does this mean that you will discriminate against better-qualified candidates to hire purely based upon the color of someone's skin? Another reason the rhetoric from political activists gives us pause. In my statement on nine thirteen of two thousand and twenty-one, I shared how Dr. Ibram Kendi's book was read to my elementary-school-aged daughter in the district. I didn't complain, I just wanted you to elaborate and also explain it was propaganda. In an excerpt from this book, or from his other book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, Dr. Kendi says, "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination. It won't be constructive to dismiss our concerns as extreme or irrational." Last summer, we noticed when the NEA adopted as-modified New Business Item Thirty-nine, codifying their support and defense of teachers who utilized the practice of critical race theory in the classroom. They don't teach it, they practice it. In my statement from October, I specifically asked what diversity means with respect to your hiring practices. I'm sure it seemed odd at the time. However, we now see overt examples of this right next door in Minneapolis. ABC News reports, "When Minneapolis teachers settled a fourteen-day strike in March, they celebrated a groundbreaking provision in their new contract that was meant to shield teachers of color from seniority-based layoffs and help ensure that students from racial minorities have teachers who look like them." That language sounds familiar. From the contract, "Starting with the spring of two thousand and twenty-three budget tie-out cycle, if accessing a teacher who is a member of a population underrepresented among licensed teachers in the site, the district shall access," nice way of saying fire, "the next least senior teacher who is not a member of the underrepresented population." Is this overt racism? Is it overt racial discrimination? Kendi probably would actually admit that it is. Also from the ABC story, Callahan called it "just one teensy-tiny step towards equity." There's one of those words. Help us understand what you mean. Don't follow their lead, don't be racist, don't discriminate based on race. I'd ask for more discussion, more debate, not less. Set up a forum, invite the public. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And I think you're also up for another? Okay, so we're on to persons wishing to address the school board on agenda items. And Chad, we've got you coming up again.
My evening, good evening, my name is Chad. I live at seven four zero five South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. With respect to the Continue to Learn Plan update, I've noticed that the updated CDC guidelines, per the updated CDC guidelines, that you removed the policies that treated unvaccinated children differently than vaccinated children. Thank you for that. I'd like to think that it was my persuasive arguments over the months that led to this change in policy. Or perhaps it was the doubly vaccinated and doubly boosted Dr. Fauci or President Biden, both getting COVID twice, that had you question the wisdom of this policy. But I do realize in the end, you had to listen to the experts to manage your risk. With that said, please remember the value of sincere, well-reasoned skepticism. Thank you for not following the outright idiocy of larger cities like New York. Imagine continuing to deny over three hundred and seventy-five thousand kids access to sports or other quote "high-risk activities" unquote because they're unvaccinated. Imagine knowing what we know now and still coercing your teachers and staff into continued boosters. They know the vaccines being offered don't prevent infection. They know the vaccines being offered don't prevent transmission. They know that the immunity conferred by infection is equal, if not superior, to that conferred by the vaccines, which were developed against long-extinct variants. And they know that almost all kids have been infected. And yet they persist, not in pursuing a science-backed policy, but in pursuing compliance. Compliance which in the light of the evidence that has been available to us for months, and you've heard here for months, almost a year, will likely be considered medically unethical in the end. If I were to ask for improvements to the plan as provided in this report, it would be to the Vaccine Resources Section, and it would be to inform all who might read it that prior infection is more durable and more efficacious than any of the vaccine schedules that have been recommended. Should also be made clear, given this, that to vaccinate a COVID-nineteen recovered person is to ignore the resulting risk analysis and is likely medically unethical, especially when one considers the risk stratification by age and chronic disease. Lastly, I would like to again say thank you to the board, the administration, teachers, and staff. Despite our policy differences, our children and our families are the beneficiaries of your recent leadership on this front. And I say that with sincerity and not snark. Again, when the rest of the country lost their heads, thank you for keeping yours. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Six, Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So move.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes. And on to the good news report. Dan.
And it's going to be me tonight. Yes, we have a guest with us tonight. We have Steve Hildebrand. Steve represents the Promising Futures Fund. And Steve, if you have guests with you, I'll let you introduce them. I didn't know if you brought anybody with you or not. We want to start this good news report by saying thank you. Steve has done so much for the children in our community and their families. Because where all of this started, as I recall, is you saw a need. And when you saw a need, you went about finding some solutions that have resulted in some really nice program enhancements for our students and focusing on literacy and getting books into the hands of kids, which we love that. So I would invite you to give us an update and let us celebrate the good work of Promising Futures.
Thanks, Dr. Stephen. And thank you all. Thank you for your service to our community. You have a tough job and you do it well. You protect the taxpayer dollars very carefully and you protect our children and provide a great education. And we love the partnership that we've created with the Sioux Falls School District. My name is Steve Hildebrand. I chair the Promising Futures Fund. It's a nonprofit here in Sioux Falls, which we started about three years ago. And our primary mission is to provide equity for kids across the school district, primarily focused on poverty, trying to bring equity to kids who are growing up in poverty in the district. Our efforts are to go into the community, to raise as much money as we possibly can and provide that money directly to the schools and to the district. We started with a Book a Month Club, and it's a program that's really grown. And I wanted to come tonight to provide the good news and to thank our community for supporting this program. Honestly, it's been pretty amazing. We started this program a little over, or a little less than three years ago at Lowell Elementary, where there were nineteen classrooms. And Diane Kennedy, the principal there, was asking us to find people in the community who would sponsor each classroom, providing a book a month for each child for the nine months during the school year. And I told Diane, I wasn't sure if we could find nineteen people. And today, we have found two hundred and forty classroom sponsors. We sponsor every single classroom, every single child in thirteen of the twenty-three elementary schools here in Sioux Falls. These are the schools with the highest rates of poverty, the kids with the highest level of need when it comes to reading. What we have learned from the principals and the teachers is that oftentimes, a kid growing up in poverty might not be read to as a child, they might not have books in their home, their parents may not speak English. And so there's a lot of barriers. And so a lot of these children are showing up at kindergarten behind. And so this is an effort to allow each of these children to pick out their own book and to own the book. So at the end of the school year, each child has nine books to take home. If they start the program in kindergarten and do it through fifth grade, they're going to have fifty-six books in their home that hopefully they're sharing with siblings, hopefully they're trading with their friends. But ideally, they're learning to read at a higher level. We're very proud of this and we're very thankful to the two hundred and forty sponsors across the Sioux Falls School District who have invested in this program. It's a program where we ask them to give three hundred and fifty dollars to support a kindergarten first or second-grade classroom, or six hundred and fifty for third, fourth, or fifth grade, where the books are a little bit more expensive. But each kid gets to pick out their book and they own the book. This is their program, and it's a wonderful program that the schools have implemented on behalf of those kids. I'll say two other reading programs that we do. Superintendent, you deemed the month of March as Everybody Reads Month. We stepped up to the plate, provided a hardcover book for about thirty-four hundred kids across our thirteen elementaries that we support. And that was a wonderful opportunity to give them a little bit of a special book that they also own. And then the principals have asked us to create a summer reading program that provides books to send home with kids with encouragement to read over the summer. And this year, we provided a wonderful packet of six books for thirty-four hundred kids as well. And that was five books for reading and one math workbook with encouragement to read. And we suggested to teachers do a little contest to encourage kids to do those math problems over the summer, because most kids aren't going to do these math problems on their own. I sure wouldn't. So it's a wonderful opportunity for these kids to have books in their home that they can read over the summer and hopefully address some of the reading loss that kids, especially kids in poverty, oftentimes have. So we're very proud of this. In total, this last school year and this upcoming school year, we'll put seventy thousand books in the hands of these kids. And that's a big number and something we're really proud of. So a lot of these kids are going to go home with about fifteen books over the course of the school year. So it's a great program that we're incredibly proud of. We love doing this. And what I want to say is, the community has been so responsive, they've understood the need, they have stepped up and written the checks to support this program, or these three programs, I should say. And when we did the resolicitation for the Book a Month Club to seek those two hundred and forty classroom sponsors, we did this in twenty-eight days. And that just kind of blew me away that so very quickly, we're able to find so many people to contribute and to support our kids. So very proud of what we're doing. I left you a little piece of literature so you can see all that we're doing with field trips and experiences and supporting teachers and everything else. So we love working with you and we're just very proud of what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve. Thank you, Steve, and for everyone that is involved. It is just another wonderful example of our community stepping up and providing resources and support for our most at-risk and at-needs kids. So just thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for seeing that need and fulfilling it, and you know, ten times over. So just appreciate that and thank you for being here tonight.
I just want to add, I know you talked a lot about your reading initiatives, which are amazing. And I think that closely linked to that is your experiences in your field trips. And I don't know if you said it, if you copied somebody, I don't know, but I read it on one of your posts, that you said, "You cannot be what you cannot see." And that has something that has been resonating with me ever since I read that. And so I think about tying together the experiences part of a book. And so many times, you don't understand that kids can read a book, but if they can't relate to that experience, it's hard for them to have comprehension, it's hard for them to have the vocabulary. So if a kid has never been to a Canaries game and they read a book about baseball, they may not connect some of those things. Or if they've never, think about all of the things and the amazing, the college visits, the, all the field trips that you guys have done, is really, yes, it's fun for the kids and it's an experience, but it's also impacting their reading and their ability to relate to characters and books and vocabulary and things like that. So it's such an amazing program and just a package deal that maybe people don't put together, but they really are closely aligned. And so as somebody who has kids in the district and whose classmates benefit from your generosity and the generosity of your foundation, thank you very much for the books and for the experiences that our kids are being able to have.
I think it's amazing how our community gets involved in this project. I can't, I don't know, but I can't think of another community that the citizens of this city get behind kids. When you ask for help- When you ask for help, it's kids, they respond. I just, I'm overwhelmed. Thank you.
And I just, he's very humble, but this wouldn't have happened without Steve. He started this out with an idea and has created this board and done the work to get the fundraising and made it successful. And, you know, it started with asking the principals what they really need. He didn't come in there saying, "This is what I want to do." He asked those questions and it's really filling that need, so thank you very much.
And I would be remiss in not acknowledging Board Member Mickelson and her involvement on that board as well. And thank you for your support in doing that and helping build this group up as well. So, all right. That's, thanks, Steve. Thank you very much.
They've said it all. I don't want to labor it. Thank you, and happy birthday coming up.
All right, we will move on to Agenda Items 8, Conflicts of Interest. We didn't have any new conflicts of interest this month. We'll move on to the Approval of the Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Items 9A through G, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. We move on to Item 10, Supplemental Consent Agenda. Items A through C, Approval of Claims to Stanford Health. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. And now on to Items 10D, Approval of Claims to Avera.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes with one abstention from myself. All right, on to Reports of the Superintendent.
Yes, our first report tonight is brought to you by Dr. Nold. And he's going to talk about some of the elements of our safety and security protocols here in the school district. Following that, we have a busing update, we have a couple of special guests with us who Missy Brack will introduce. And then we have a public hearing and finally, a report on some of the changes to the Return to Learn update. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Nold.
Good evening, Board members. And tonight, I bring to you the Sioux Falls School District Safety and Security Report. The purpose of this report is to really update the board on the ongoing safety and security programming of the Sioux Falls School District, and it's primarily in the area of well-being. Explanation of this report, the safety and security of our students, our staff, and our community members really continues to be a focal point. And this is truly addressed in the area of well-being, which is part of our district priorities. You will see safety throughout that entire district priority area. We do also have, the district has developed seven pillars of success for our safe and secure environment. And I truly bring that to you as a product of the work of our risk manager that we've employed through the Sioux Falls School District, which is retired Major General Bob Bray and his work in making sure that we have this in place so that we do address each one of the areas of our safety for the district. You can kind of see in this diagram, the seven areas. I will break those down as we go throughout this report to highlight some of the things that we're doing in each one of those seven areas. The explanation of this just being continued, we're really going to look at some of the overview, the general overviews of some of the safety protocols and procedures, some of our building changes that we have looked at, and the technology that we utilize within the Sioux Falls School District to keep our students, staff, and community safe. So we'll start out in this first area. This first area has to do with the policies, practices, and procedures. It's probably one of the least flashy areas, but one of the most important areas as you go through. And it's really putting those things in place so that we have the plans in place, the procedures in place, so that every school is prepared to address any type of a situation that comes their way, especially when we're speaking about the safety of our students and our staff. The first area that I'll highlight in there is the annual required trainings that we have. So each year, as many of you know and have probably been part of in previous years, but our fire drills, our tornado drills, we also utilize our lockdown drills and tabletop safety exercises that eSchool will complete. The tabletop safety exercises, really practices that they will go through, discuss specific situations, and then work out what those scenarios would be according to the plans that we have in place. We often also take the staff's safety and security training, so we work through each year at the beginning of the year with safety and security training that each one of our staff members will go through at the start of the year as part of that back-to-school training. Some of the additional drills that we will look at in the training is reunification drills. If you remember a couple of years ago, three years ago, I believe it was, we went through the whole reunification process, where we utilized one of the schools, Eugene Field, and took those individual students out and practiced that reunification process at the arena. That's one of the drills. We will also do that again this year, but it will not be with the students. We'll take the adults and work them through that same process again. Our alternative site location drills, where we have for each and every school, an alternative site that they will have to go to in case we need to evacuate their building. And so that is set up, and we go through and talk about that, and we make sure the staff know where those locations are at. We put agreements in place with each one of those, or MOUs with each one of those sites, that we make sure that we have that agreement in place in advance of any school needing to use that. We also have our school safety professional development, and part of that is done within the building. And part of that is done through some of the training that we have utilized through the work of Bob Bray and making the videos available that we go through. And each staff member, depending on what their position is with the Sioux Falls School District, they would need to go through and make sure they complete that training and then sign off. We also have our incident management team tabletop exercises. So here at the Central IPC, we go through some of these tabletop exercises as well. We try to talk through and work with some of the entities in town, fire, rescue, our police department, many other areas in town, just to be able to make sure that we know and have those practices and protocols in place as we work through some of those tabletop exercises. A few other areas that we can look at here, as I stated, the developed videos with specific staff training. We have each of the staff members go through, depending on what their position is, and complete those trainings. The monthly radio tests, we do that throughout the entire district. And our risk manager, Bob Bray, leads each one of the schools through that test to make sure that each one of our radios is working. That's our primary means of communication when we do have a safety or security issue in the district. We also work through the maintenance of the district emergency operation plans and the emergency hazard response plan. And he continues to update that with each one of the schools to make sure that plan goes through and addresses almost every different scenario they could have, or they could relate to, they would come in contact with a school setting. And the final part of that is each, our school safety plans, all our schools in the district are wired to have a safety plan in place, a security plan. Each plan should be designed locally with help from law enforcement, emergency personnel, and public health officials to make sure that it is specific to that school, and they can utilize that and implement that at the school. Some of our technology that we have, we'll talk through here, but we have been working on this multiple years. It is not something just lately here, but we continue to adapt it as new things come out and are available to us. Some of those things, as I stated, with the radio system, we have the ability with that to go both analog and digital channels. We have the ability to communicate directly with that with our police, our fire, and emergency personnel within our community. Or we can close that down to just talk personally within the building or within the district on private channels. We also have a system that's set up at each one of our schools called the Easy Lobby Visitor Management System. And really, it's where you come in and produce that ID, that government-issued ID, and we check that, just to make sure, a log of access, who has come into our buildings, when have they come into our buildings. And then we evaluate that against a visitor credentials, against a database, just to make sure there's no concerns with an individual entering our buildings. We have closed doors notifications. This just notifies, it's a computer program that notifies that there's an open door at any location within the building. Those are utilized by our building principals, so they can see if there's a door that is ajar at some location within the building. Those are all for the primary outside doors, not the interior doors. Some things continued on here, camera equipment has been something that we've invested in significantly. The emphasis on the camera equipment is truly on those exterior doors, those entrances or exits at each one of our buildings. They are covered on each one. We have the ability to record and export if we need to, depending on what the situation is. And we have both remote and onsite access. So if we're not at the physical school building at that time, we can remotely access those video cameras. There's an average of over 70 cameras in our high school, over 50 in our middle schools, and over 10 per elementary, and 41 different sites with surveillance. Intercoms and notification systems, warning systems, we have that within our schools now, especially if you start to see our newer ones, there's even additional light systems that we have in those, depending on what the situation is. And it notifies our staff and students what the situation and what they need to be prepared for. We're trying to look at other updates with our other schools as well. But each one has an intercom, light notification, and a warning system. Our communication systems for specific functions, for example, reunification or emergency response, those could be different within the schools. And then a V Alert system, we have itinerant staff that go out to homes, and they have a system that they utilize as well to be able to notify in any case of an emergency. The next part on there is our physical security. If you notice, each one of the schools has an entrance that is utilized, that's a safe and secure entrance now. That was something that the board approved several years ago. The last change on that happened just out here within the last year here at IPC. So we're the last one to be able to make that change. But each one of those buildings has a secure front door access. And that is where we have that Easy Lobby set up as well. Some of our facility designs, I apologize, I was a little bit late there, but with our facility designs, we do have those secure entrances that we talked about. This is one of our pillars as well, the emergency warning lights. We also have certain doors on the interior of the building that will lock, depending on what the situation is, so they can automatically lock those doors to make sure they keep things at a secure area towards the front of the building. And then we do have the window coverings that we've installed in all of our buildings now, to make sure that if they need to at any point in time, they can close those to minimize that view within the classrooms or within the school building. Our school resource officers, this is another point of pride that we have, is our ability, we heard earlier here, with different resources with our community to help our students, especially our most at-risk students. Another great resource that we have with the Sioux Falls community is our school resource officers, and they're a great asset. We work jointly with our Sioux Falls Police Department. There are 16 SROs, our school resource officers, that work within our school buildings on a daily basis. There's three, two sergeants and one lieutenant. And then we also encourage our police department to utilize our buildings as often as they can for their training, so they become very familiar with our buildings and the layout of our buildings. And so they do that often within the summer days or some of the school days where we do not have school in session. One of the other things that we significantly highlight is our See Something, Say Something. So if you've had a notification that comes home, where we update you on something that maybe happened in the community, where we needed to do a shelter in place or a lockdown drill, we try to always close that out with an encouragement that if you see something, to say something. Majority of the information that we do receive, that we look into or investigate or work with the police department on, is because somebody in our community, whether that be a student, a parent, a community member, has notified us of a concern. So we make sure we look into those concerns, most of which are very harmless situations, but you just never know. So we greatly appreciate our community helping us with that information, so we can look into those things to make sure our students are safe at school. The vigilance and commitment is something that we have to continually keep to the forefront of the conversation. We want to make sure any and all of our staff members know, and any of our students know, that it is something that's going to be an ongoing commitment from the Sioux Falls School District to keep our students and staff safe. Culture and climate, it's one that may not come to the top of people's minds right away when they think about school safety, but it is an integral part of keeping our students and staff safe. Some of the things that we talk about there are truly the climate and how we keep our kids involved, and how we keep them in a relationship with our staff and other students at a building, so we make sure that they feel a significant part of the building. And so as we go through and talk about some of those, the implementation of the MTSS model, that's happening throughout the entire district to make sure we have ways to be able to intervene and help students at an earlier basis. Our safety and security coordinator, that's one of the new things we have. Many of the things that we have here have been ongoing for multiple years, but our new addition of our hired Dave Osterquist with that safety and security coordinator. He'll go out and work with a lot of the buildings to make sure their plans are in place and the things that we need to make sure we know from our staff or our students, he can hear that, to make sure we incorporate that into our future plans. Implementation of a student threat and risk assessment program, we're working through that now as we go through some of the training. But how do we help to intervene at an earlier stage with a lot of our students so they can be successful in school? Our K-12 career counselor, to make sure that they have an area that they see purpose in their schooling. Increased counseling services and increased social-emotional supports will also aid in that, to make sure that we address their needs at a younger age and earlier intervention. Our career pathways that we've added, some of the things that we've added as well with our school psychologists for additional student support. We have the enhanced counseling program in the elementary, where they're going through more classroom sessions, they'll go into the classes and help and teach in those classes. And our additional athletic options for our middle school students and our high school students, to help them to be involved. That's something that the board approved through this last budget cycle. And we know that if those students are involved at a younger age, they're going to stay more involved, and students that are involved have a much higher rate of attendance and far fewer office referrals. Additional schools to increase the crowding was something that our community approved over the last couple of years. That helps more of our students be involved in activities at the school. Our community engagement center, to make sure our families have the resources they need so they can come to school prepared to learn. Our after-school programming, our additional social workers and student support for family needs. And then also the new Office of Indian Education Department Chair, that's another area that we're working to reach out to some of our Native American families, to make sure that they have what they need to be able to be successful in school. Our PBIS implementation, our JAG program at each high school, and all the additional supports we're providing at the Axtow Park Programming. One of the key ones that anytime I can have a chance to highlight, mentoring. We need more mentors, the more mentors we can have to be able to match up with our students, it'll benefit us, our students, and our community greatly. So those are some of the things that we highlight and hit on that we've been doing. Some of the highlights here for the '22-'23 school year are our priorities, obviously with that continued safety training. We did meet with a group of teachers, clerical, support staff, and we talked through, what are some of those checklists? Because some of the teachers had brought forward concerns about, I'm not sure what all I do need in my classroom, what all I should know. So we created a safety classroom checklist, that they should be able to go through this checklist and say, yes, I know where each one of these things are at and located within my room, or I have access to it close by my room. Staff expectations checklist as well, just some of the things that we require or expect of our staff to make sure that we keep a safe and secure school. We have a completion of the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, or the C-STAG training. So we're going through Level 1 and Level 2 of that training. And then we will meet as a school to decide what portions of that or what parts of that do we incorporate into our Sioux Falls School District program. Our district safety and security coordinator position, I talked about that, that's a new position this year. Our district tabletop exercise, this year, we will focus on that reunification process. So we'll have our social workers, our counselors, and any of those staff that are involved in the reunification process, we'll have them all together and we'll go through a practice exercise with them on that. We will evaluate each of the school's safety protocols, and then again, just a proactive approach to the safety and security of our schools. In summary, we believe all students and staff must feel a sense of belonging and have the supports needed to be successful both academically and socially. It is our responsibility to create a safe, inclusive, and nurturing learning community in each and every school. Administrative recommendation would be to acknowledge the report on the Sioux Falls School District Safety and Security Update, and I would stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Nold?
Well, I'd just like to acknowledge Major, retired Major General Bray for all of his work that he's done with the school district and now with this new position with working with them and helping to continue this process of keeping our students and staff safe in our buildings. It's a very top priority of our district and always has been and continue. We want our parents and families to know that we do keep that on top of mind.
Quick question with regard to the safety training. Do we do an orientation for our substitute teachers?
Yes, we do. We have a program for each of the substitutes, and they do a training each year that they'll go through, and there's a video that they watch, and they have some of that training on the safety and security. Yes. And that was a part that came up several years ago, but Rhonda Eddings takes them through that safety process, and Bob Bray will speak to some of those as well, especially the new substitute teachers. And I agree with you, Bob has been an incredible asset for our safety programs over the last several years. He deals with a lot of those nitty-gritty details that many others would not have the time to be able to do that, and he has done that to an exceptional level. time to be able to do that, and he has done that to an exceptional level.
I would just add that kind of the conclusion I get from all of the things that you talked about is really that the safety of our schools is not one person's responsibility, but everybody's. And so whether it's the students or the parents or the community members who see something and say something, or whether it's the teachers who make sure that their doors are, you know, closed that are near them, they're outside doors, or just listening, whether it's social media or whether it's, you know, at a basketball game or just paying attention, I think that that's the biggest thing is for, we can do all these things together, but if we don't work together and have everybody all hands on deck, then there's a hole. And so it really is everybody's responsibility to do so. And we've got many great programs and technology and facilities and things like that, but it really comes down to all of us as individuals investing in that and making sure that we all take care of each other and report things when we see them or support people when we see that they need support to ultimately keep all of us safe.
I think it's sad we even have to discuss it, but it's an important part. And we have to do our due diligence and I appreciate what the administration's done. And we hope for the best and pray for the best. I think we're doing what we can do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, can I get an approval to, for the update, safety and security report?
Still moved.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes. On to the next report.
Yep, we're going to invite Missy Brack to come up for our busing report, and Missy, I'm going to ask you to introduce and recognize our special guests from School Bus Inc. who are fresh off the airplane to be here tonight. So we really appreciate you being here and we will talk about the work that's happened thus far and things, how they look as we open a new school year.
Good afternoon. Jacob Iverson and Josh Kennard literally just got here off of the plane. They're from School Bus Inc. and they have been working with our district over the past year, trying to maintain services for all of our students we were currently serving. So we're going to look at three areas to discuss the transportation for this year. And that includes recruitment and retention of bus personnel, route adjustments, implementation of several pieces of new busing software. So we'll start with the first one, the bus personnel. SBI is targeting a need of at least 71 routes at any given time. Usually routes are double runs, meaning that most of the 71 buses run an 8:00 a.m. or an elementary and a 9:00 a.m. middle school route, and then in the afternoon, a 3:00 p.m. and a 4:00 p.m. Some of those 71 buses due to long routes can only do single runs and some due to shorter routes and adjustments in bell schedules can run triple runs in the morning and afternoon, and we'll get to that here in a little bit. SBI has significantly updated its personnel recruitment and staffing, training staff with a full-time recruiter and a full-time professional trainer and a team of drivers to train and onboard CDL professional school bus drivers. SBI has also significantly increased their starting wages from 1,815 last year to 22 this coming year. Currently, there are 66 a.m. and p.m. routes covered and a pipeline of 14 potential future drivers, seven of which are behind-the-wheel training right now at SBI and seven are completing paperwork and permits. SBI also has five office shop employees with CDLs that are not in this count. The second thing that we're going to talk about is route adjustments. Last year, at the end of the first semester and in the early second semester, route adjustments were made to reduce by seven the number of required buses and bus drivers on the road at any given time. In May and June, SBI routers, principals representing all levels and central office staff then worked together to further reduce by five the number of buses that were required at any given time. This, of course, requires a reduction of five early routes and five late routes. The committee looked at several options, including eliminating early childhood busing except for special ed students, increasing the maximum distance specifically looking at two miles for the walk areas, and removing students from bus routes if they don't ride within a specific time period. The committee decided to continue to bus all current areas, including early childhood students, while adjusting elementary school bell times and double-running 10 of the shorter middle school routes. And then what we are doing with those when we're talking about the adjustments in time, so Laura B. Anderson, we didn't do a change in the bell times, but what we're doing is we are picking up students early and dropping them off early at the school and then going back into their neighborhoods and picking up another group of students and bringing them to school at their normal 7:45 time. And then at the end of the day, the first group will leave at the normal time and the second group will be picked up by 3:15. These two adjustments maintain a one-bus reduction, which we made that last year. And then Hawthorne, we adjusted their bell times, they are now an early site. They will double with Lowell, so we had to adjust Lowell's bell time, they are now going to be a late site so they can double with Hawthorne. Rosa Parks became an early site and will double with John Harris and Cleveland. So we adjusted John Harris and Cleveland to late sites in order to accomplish that. JFK's bell time was adjusted to 7:40 and 2:25, there'll be an early site that will double with Pettigrew. Oscar Hall is another one that we adjusted to an early site so they could also double with Pettigrew. We have Ben Rifle that will have two doubles in the a.m., so what that's going to look like is they will run an elementary site route, get those kids dropped off, and then they will go do the first run for Ben Rifle. Those kids will get there about 8:15 and then they'll go back out into the neighborhoods and get those, another group of kids that will get there about 8:45. So then in the reverse happens in the afternoon, so there will be some kids that will stay at Ben Rifle in the afternoon and will leave there about 4:40. Same thing will happen with Memorial. Memorial will have three buses that will be like that. Additionally, to make up bus route, to make bus routes more efficient, SBI recommended to the committee that bus stop distances be adjusted so buses don't spend as much time going through the neighborhoods. We're doing more corner stops. The general stop distance standards were enacted. We have kindergarten of first grade is .2 miles from their house or 3.2 blocks. Second through fifth grade is .35 miles from their house or 5.6 blocks. Sixth through eighth, eighth grade is half a mile from their house or eight blocks. And then our special education students will be door-to-door. We also worked with SBI this year to do a new busing software to increase student safety and allow for better communication with parents through a parent guardian app called Stop Finder, which allows parents and guardians to accurately track their students' school bus in real time. The app is easy to use and is secure, so only authorized users have access to school bus information. Stop Finder, which is tied to the district's bus routing software, is free to parents and guardians and also users to customize when they receive alerts about their children's bus location. The app is also a communication tool, providing parents a convenient way to receive notifications instantly. Because Stop Finder works seamlessly with the district's routing software, the transportation leaders can target communications to specific regions that may only be relevant for that area. For example, if a road is closed, bus will be late, only the parents of that area will be notified. In addition to real-time geo-alert notifications showing the location of the bus and the ability to receive other communications, Stop Finder also provides school bus stop and schedule information. To maximize the effect of the Stop Finder, students will be issued ID badges to scan on and off the bus. The badges will ensure that students board the correct bus at the end of the school day and get off the bus at the correct stop. Students will scan their badges on the Wayfinder tablet, which also includes a turn-by-turn instruction for the drivers. Finally, there's another piece of software called View Finder, which is a dashboard that allows school building personnel to track the whereabouts of buses that serve their schools. Central office and SBI staff can use View Finder to track the progress of all buses currently running. The cost for this is approximately $325,000 for new equipment, supplies, computers, software, and employee stipends for FY '22. We had two high school, middle school, and elementary principals involved in the committee, along with the transportation supervisor, our transportation specialist, and our school busing group. In summary, the district and School Bus Inc. staff worked together for the past several months to maintain busing service to all neighborhoods that were served last year. Three main areas were reviewed and revisions were made to maintain busing to all neighborhoods that were served with bus service last year. These include recruitment and retention of bus personnel, route adjustments, and implementation of several pieces of new bus software. SBI is on track to be, to have required enough, recruited enough drivers to fully staff all routes planned for the beginning of the school year. Several routes in some elementary bell times were adjusted to reduce the number of buses and bus drivers required to run all the daily routes. The software enhancements include a parent app to track the progress of their students' buses and when and where the student gets on and off the bus. They also have the ability of individual building student, have the ability of individual buildings to track the progress of buses that serve their school. The administrative recommendation to the school board is to acknowledge the Fall 2022 busing update. Any questions?
I just, I think the app is going to be so helpful for families, for the student, because I know, you know, especially if there's a new driver, if it's running late due to no fault of their own, but something happened in traffic or whatever, it will be very helpful for parents and families and that, so.
The feedback that I've gotten so far from parents have been that it's easy to access and see the schedules. It's been, I think it's been good so far.
I would just like to applaud your efforts. I know it's a tough job. We all know what the job market's like today, things going on, but I hope it works and I'm excited about it and I think it'll be good.
I think especially in our winters and weather in general, it would be a big satisfier for families to know. I know I had kids that rode the bus and again, like you said, by no fault of their own, there's an accident that they have to wait for, or there's, they're waiting for a snowplow or they're waiting for whatever, you know, and parents can then at least have an idea of maybe how long it's going to be until they get home instead of relying on their student who maybe is on their phone, trying to give them a location of where they're at or who knows what. So I think that's awesome. You didn't mention anything about tripper buses for high schools, so I'm assuming that that's not part of this rollout. Is that an accurate statement?
The tripper buses will not, the Stop Finder app will not work with that because there are no students that are assigned to those buses, so no, it will not work with that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Quick question on supervision, the middle school kids that are on the second wave for the busing, where are they outside kind of waiting for the bus or in the fall weather? Do they wait in the gym?
We've worked with both Ben Rifle and Memorial Middle School. They will have staff on hand, so there will be supervision there. I believe that the plan is to keep them indoors. You know, beyond that, I don't know, they're going to have extra educational time? I can't tell you that question or answer that question, but they are aware and they have plans in place.
It's not a whole lot of time, so it's, yeah, it's just 15 minutes or so. Some slow kids like mine might appreciate taking a late bus.
Mine will be taking a late bus.
I would be curious. I would like to commend Missy. She's been answering a lot of questions that have come in as we get ready to use the app. I'd also like to commend the School Bus Inc. staff. And gentlemen, I would invite either of you to come to the podium if you want to make a few comments since you came all the way here, which I think also shows their commitment. You know, this was a transition for the ownership of SBI last year, coming into a market that's unknown. They have recruited and recruited and recruited, and I've seen them in multiple locations throughout the summer. And it requires all of us to readjust our thinking around student transportation. We know this is a nationwide area of shortage, and so there are adjustments that the school district has made. Those are difficult decisions to make when you're adjusting times and places and when we're talking about children early in the morning, later in the afternoon, getting to and fro, those are difficult decisions. But we also know we can't keep doing things in exactly the same way as we all try to meet up together and make adjustments that we think are going to allow us to simply continue transporting our students. And so I don't think any of us know what the future of this looks like. We need to do our very best to continue cultivating people in our community who may be willing to drive for us, and we have seen you all step up and make improvements. We know that there were foundational pieces that needed to be upgraded with just management software, and we really appreciate all of your efforts that you have done to continue to serve our students and our community. So with that said, there's a lot that's happened. Feel free to come up.
One, thank you. Thank you for the board for allowing me to come up here and speak. And thank you, Dr. Stavon, and thank the board for what we've been able to accomplish this last year, but I'd really like to thank Missy. She has really helped spearhead this project over the course of this last year. If it wasn't for her, we probably wouldn't have gotten this close to this finish line. Her dedication to the school district has been immense, so thank you all for allowing us that opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, I know it's been a challenging, we've had our challenges, but it sounds like we've got some really good enhancements and software that will help take care of those challenges in the coming year. So Missy, thank you for all your hard work and we've got one more, one more speaker.
All right, Jacob. I'd like to echo what Josh said is thank you for that opportunity, but the collaborative partnership is really important, from how we finished off the year strong in those ways through the summer and putting things in place to make sure we live out the spirit of continuous improvement, to build where we were. The support that we went through training this summer, there's been a lot of training going on, infusing technology affects all the stakeholders, and so I appreciate that. The enhancements is really forward-leaning with Sioux Falls School District, what you've done. I absolutely applaud you on that. You'll be the first in the state doing what you're doing fully, and we do operate in the state. We're wonderful to be partners with you. We're here to make sure everything goes as smooth as possible and put the resources forward, so thank you again.
That's a good note. Our bus drivers have been learning about their new technology. This is a quantum leap for them as well. I saw some out driving today and I thought they're probably trying out their new equipment and seeing how it feels to be monitored as you're driving, which I don't know about you, but I don't know that I always want somebody watching me where I'm driving or how late or early I am, but that's a big commitment on their part. And I also want to mention our parents. We've had a lot of parents step up and help us with problem solving and giving us ideas for thinking about that have been really, really helpful.
And thank you for mentioning that. It's about 15 hours of training each driver's going through, hands-on, physically getting out there, doing stuff, and I think that's a great way to set us up for success. And the plug, we're always looking for recruiting good quality professional school bus drivers, so thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to acknowledge the Fall 2022 busing update?
Still moved.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. On to item C, public hearing.
Yes, and we'll ask Becky Dorman to come forward to walk us through another hearing for waivers for teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Stavon. Good evening, everyone. I'm here once again to talk about or to ask for your approval to apply for a waiver of administrative rule. A South Dakota administrative rule allows us to employ teachers pursuing their special education alternative certification while teaching in the field of education. Under this administrative rule, teachers need to have a teaching certificate, just not necessarily with a special ed endorsement, and three years of teaching experience within the past five years. and three years of teaching experience within the past five years. The South Dakota administrative rule also allows us to apply for a waiver. So that's what we're doing. We have three individuals as part of this public hearing where we need to waive a couple of those general requirements within the special education alternative certification. Those specific teachers are Travis Kaiser, special education at Washington High School, Lori Venti, special education at Horace Mann Bridges, and Nancy McColsky, special education at Susan B. Anthony Elementary. One special emphasis I would like to put on stating those three individuals' names is that they are all promoted from positions that they held within the district. Travis was an IEP facilitator. Lori was an education assistant at Bridges. And Nancy has been a longtime substitute teacher and education assistant for us. So I ask you to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize administration to proceed with applications for waivers from administrative rules.
All right, this is my first public hearing. Do I have to open it up? Yes, I have to open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic can come up. All right, we will now close the public hearing and ask for an acknowledgement. We've acknowledged the public hearing and authorize, get a motion to authorize the administration to proceed with applications for waivers from administrative rules.
Still moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And I believe the final report for the night. The Sioux Falls School District Continue to Learn Plan for the 2022-23 school year, I will go through and just provide you the updates on that. These updates are provided to you because of the changes of the guidance that just came out this past week by the CDC. And so the changes were prompted because of those changes. First of all, just a brief explanation. The Sioux Falls School District obviously had our Continue to Learn Plan in place. The board approved that August 9th of 2021. Prior to that, we had the Return to Learn Plan, which carried us through the 2021 school year, which is about 165 pages long. We still keep that there, so people can go out and read that if they would like to. But we replaced that sense with our Continue to Learn Plan. We review that plan every six months, roughly in December and May of each year, or anytime that there are significant changes that come about. And obviously, the significant changes were the CDC changes that came out this past week. I'll just give you the general highlights of the changes that occurred. You have the Red Line document attached that would go into effect later this evening. The general changes, we removed the quarantine language for close contacts as part of the CDC recommendation, removed the spacing expectations between students, removed the statements that children under five are not eligible for vaccinations because they're obviously eligible at a much younger age now, removed the positive case building notification requirement. The face coverings, the language on there now will read, "Face coverings will be available for all students, staff, and visitors. And the wearing of face coverings will be a personal family or a personal or family decision." Some other added changes, the PPE guidance was updated throughout the document. That's the personal protective equipment that our staff will wear times they interact or work with students. Infographics were changed, especially removed from pages 12, 32, and 33 because we now have a new updated daily screening checklist that will be utilized based on the CDC guidance. And then changes were made that correspond with the guidance on positive cases and their isolation of ill students, the process of working with students that need medical assistance in any of those areas that were impacted by the health services. So as we sent or went through and made these changes, predominance of the changes all came in the area of health services. And the final change that was made, the table of contents was updated, document the date changes were made on this date on the 22nd. The committee participation in this, there's 18 members of the committee, and they include administrators of each of the areas of the Continue to Learn planning area and the Sioux Falls Education Association president. The members of this committee participated electronically this time because of the predominance of the changes came within the health services area. In closing, the Sioux Falls School District is committed to a safe learning environment for our students and staff and community. The Continue to Learn Plan was created to articulate our plans of safety. We will continue to update the plan and to reflect the latest guidance provided us by recognized local, state, and national entities. Our administrative recommendation acknowledged the 2022-23 Continue to Learn Plan updates as presented, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Noel? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion and a second to approve the update?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. And can I get a motion to move into executive session per SDCL 1-25-2?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I would request, we'll be doing the exact sessions in here, so we would just request that other participants would vacate our room as soon as possible so we can continue with our next part of our meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Statham.